All right, let's, let's start this up again.
Where we go?
Bill, don't sit down. Come on, help. All right. Next on our agenda, we have the engineering report for the new E O C design and build project. Mr. Penix, it's all yours.
Mr. Chairman, Board, Manager, good to be here. We're going to give you an update on the Health and Human Services E O C design build project that's underway. I have a, just a brief PowerPoint and it's not very long, trying to bring out the key salient points. And before we move into that, I want to say that you should be proud of the staff you have here because there's been a tremendous amount of work put into this project from the manager on down through the senior leadership, down through the department heads, down to the staff to get us to where we are today. The project is on track and on schedule. It's going to be a beautiful building, but I just want to recognize and not going to call any names, but the folks know who they are. And you should be proud of the staff.
And believe we all are.
We moved, and I appreciate all the help I had with this project. That's one thing I meant to say too. It's been a challenging year for me and folks have helped tremendously. I appreciate it, so.
Bill, before you
Yes, sir.
move from this slide, why does it say project update November seventeenth, twenty twenty five? It's two weeks away.
Was originally going to be on the seventeenth, but we were actually able to pull it all together and meet the deadline for the third. So.
Didn't know they built a time machine.
I just glanced over and went, what you calling that?
You gotta hear it again. End to action item does say the third, but the PowerPoint was when I submitted it in civic clerk, it was for the seventh.
No worries. Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
He broke it.
I think it got turned off. It wouldn't be used.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk.
We're getting a roundabout.
One of those folks that have helped tremendously.
He engineer can't work the clicker.
She's used to me calling her that. So this first slide is the site plan. We have a great design build team. We have our general contractors, Edifice, and our architect is McMillan, Paz and Smith, commonly abbreviated E slash M P S. The building will go where the current walking trail is now. As you can see here, it does turn on an angle. You can see the new parking that's going to come in. You can also see where we're using the existing parking that's over there in front of building B. The stormwater pond will be enlarged for all the new impervious that has to be added. We will get a revised walking trail along the pond. So even though we're losing our walking trail, we're going to get another one back. One big advantage of this site, there are several actually. This is a high point on the complex and even in all the recent storm events we've had, this site has never been seen underwater. And even taking that into account, the art, the architect, contract and design build team is elevating the foundation. They, they have heard the concerns of staff about flooding in buildings. So not only are we on a high point of the campus, but it's being slightly elevated to mitigate that risk. Another big advantage here is we're using the exist, existing entrance off of Old Ocean Highway where you come into building C there. That means we do not have to apply to D O T for a driveway access permit because we're reusing the current driveway. Along with that, you can see a roundabout that's proposed there. That was in the master plan we completed several years ago. That's it. The purpose is that A, it's a traffic calming device and B, because you're going to have a lot more traffic through the entrance. We're building C is now, some of the folks are going to be coming to the new building, the public mainly kind of all the departments that are moving into the building. County employees will go on through just like they do now and then go down and struggle around the roundabout. The master plan actually showed two roundabouts on the campus, this one, and then one over by the other entrance off of Old Ocean Highway. So there's a lot of advantages of this site and it has worked out really well. These are elevation views of the building. As I mentioned, it's turned on an angle. It is a four-story building. The view in the the view in the lower right is if you were facing the front of the building, that's the south perspective. That would be if you were standing at Old Ocean Highway, that's the main entrance to the building that the public would come in. The view to the left of that, the northwest perspective is from Old Ocean Highway. I'm sorry, from building C, that's the back of the building. So the upper left quadrant, the northeast perspective and the lower left quadrant, the northwest perspective are the back of the building. The two perspectives on the right are the front of the building. The lower right is the main full-on view that you will see from Old Ocean Highway. And you can kind of see some of Old Ocean Highway there in the view. And then the upper right is if you were looking at that corner of the building, but that is still the front of the building. That's that side parking lot that you saw in the site plan. The next four slides are the four floor plans. It is a four-story building. Any areas that you see highlighted or fire rated by building code, those are your elevator shaft, your stairways, things like that. First floor is going to contain health, veterans, environmental health, a WIC, a lot of the social departments. You can see the main entrance here where the public will come in. There is going to be an ombudsman. You can see that L-shaped desk there, there'll be a greeter there to help direct folks to where they need to go. This is the second floor. And again, you see those fire-rated vertical penetrations that have to be fire-rated by the building code. Second floor is also D S S and health. Most of the employees moving into the building are from building A and B in the B annex, which is health, D S S type folks. And then we also are getting a new E O C, obviously. Third floor, again, more of the same with those staff moving into the building. What's nice is we have this future outfit space here that we were able to work with a design build team on. This is future outfit. So the, the building does have room for expansion, which is really nice. And then the fourth floor is a lot of executive management for those departments. The D S S attorney, paralegals, directors, those kinds of things on the west side. There's a nice kitchen and a eating area. You can see there, there's two large multipurpose rooms with a divider between them for meetings, training, that kind of thing. And then the east wing of the building is the new E O C. You can see it laid out here, data rooms, things like that. So those are the four floors. And again, that third floor does have since about a third of the floors for future outfit. Here's the current project status and it, this project has moved along really well. And again, that's due to the efforts of a lot of people here. The building will be a four-story structure, about a hundred and forty thousand square feet. It will have a full-size emergency generator with full backup power. It will be built where the walking trail is currently located. These are the departments moving into the building. The E O C is on the fourth floor. You have the east side of the third floor for future growth. You're moving approximately three hundred and eight staff into this building. Schematic design is complete. Design development is complete. Edifice McMillan Paz and Smith is currently preparing the construction documents. The schedule, the most current schedule shows E M P S reviewing the guaranteed maximum price of what's referred to as a G M P with county staff in mid-May of next year. Then it shows the notice to proceed for construction in late May, early June. The, the schedule shows substantial completion in January of twenty twenty eight. Final completion the next month, February twenty twenty eight. And Edifice McMillan Paz and Smith has done a great job in our continuing to do so. We actually have an in-person meeting with them Wednesday of this week. They'll be back on campus. They have had regular meetings with county staff from different departments and management. So they ensure full understanding of the project, including any items or systems that must be handled by the county. And there are some of those. So we've worked really hard. So everybody's on the same page, understanding what is in their scope of work and what the county is responsible for handling.
Bill?
I'm sorry.
Can you go back one sec?
Yes, sir.
Well, you don't even, okay. So we're not getting a guaranteed maximum price until May. So in other words, that's seven months?
Mid, mid-May. It's possibly a little earlier, but they're, they just moved into the construction documents phase. They've been having meetings with code administration on building permitting and code requirements.
Seems every month that this thing's been delayed. It goes up a million to two million dollars every month, but it feels like that anyway. I mean, his job has gone up exponentially over the last year and a half. Again, the speed at which government works. I, I get how complex this project was. I, so I'm not saying it for that reason. But I, seven months, it might go up another few million dollars. I, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's a good point. And so mid-May is, this is November, so we're, you know, seven months. You tend to account the holidays and things like that this time of the year. So we may get a little earlier, but that's what the project schedule shows, Mr. Chairman. And that's the guaranteed maximum price for the, for the design build, obviously.
So the change orders come.
There, there's allowances in, that's actually the next slide and I'll move to that.
Okay.
So that's a good question. So the most recent project schedule and the cost estimate figures, they've been doing ongoing their cost estimators. Architectural and general contractor have kept a running tally as they have meetings with the county. And the plans are pretty much done now. There's no major changes. Matter of fact, there's very few tweaks anymore. I mean, they are pretty much done. Those four floor plans you just saw, there's really no changes at this point. The cost estimate figures are based upon the design development phase cost estimate that we received late October. We, we just got that late last month. So the construction part of the project's fifty seven point eight million. And then what's generally referred to as soft cost, which is your insurance, general conditions, permits, allowances, contingencies, bonds and water sewer system development charges seventeen point six. And then their pre-construction design fee, construction administration is five point five. And there's your total estimated contract with Edifice. That, that is your toast, total estimated G M P right now, eighty one oh eight oh two nineteen. And this slide, I credit Aaron for helping me with this. The usual finance, he's done a great job here. Gave he the figures I needed for the PowerPoint. And so you, here's the same figure you see, the eighty one oh eight oh two nineteen. I T infrastructure and furniture. There's one of the items the county is responsible for. That's generally referred to as structured cabling. And then F F E furniture fixtures and equipment. We were, a big part of this building is we were getting a brand new modern E O C. If you remember when we built the nine-one-one communication center in twenty fifteen, the amount of computers and cabling you can imagine for a new E O C, just like for the call center, if you remember that one. We have a figure of sixteen point two six million for I T infrastructure, furniture fixture, equipments, you know, op services has had input on the project. County I T has been a big part of the project. Andy and Cindy, then a two point seven million dollar contingency evens out a hundred million dollars. The funding sources are as shown, currently budgeted three point five designated reserves, fifty five point nine. Available undesignated reserves, twelve million. Limited obligation bond debt issuance, twenty eight point five totals the hundred million. And then there's some notes here, debt service estimate. And then twenty-year L O B, five percent interest level principal fiscal year twenty-six budget designation, two point three million. And I think that is, yeah, yes, sir, I'll go back. I told you it was a brief PowerPoint. Tried to keep it tight and all the key points in there.
This is tight?
Not lengthy.
Twenty-five million dollars of floors.
In the PowerPoint. No, no, not a super lengthy PowerPoint, but the key points in there.
Mission to cook.
Um, you know, I, I have, I helped plan a couple of television studios and one here and one in Central America. And there's usually three levels of security. There's the one for the general public. When you get in the door, you know, that general perspective where you, you know, have a lobby area, whatever you do. Then there's a secondary aspect where that's the administrative aspect where you can, you know, you have to go through at least a series of things to go into that point. But then there's a third one, third level where the control, where you run the operation in the television, whatever, and the studios. Cause you don't want the public walking into a live thing that's going to air. I guess what I'm, I'm here to ask is that I know there's a lot of components in here. There's everything from health department, D S S, E M, M, D M, the new E O C and everything else. Do we have that three-tier perspective whereby, you know, we've, we've gotten input from department heads? Or are we going to get the, the department heads to make sure that we have that level of security? Because, you know, I'm always concerned about a breach or someone who can get into one area, but then they can get, they can tailgate and get into like another area that we don't have any desire of them being in. And so is that been really taken into, to heart to make sure that we don't have that? Or are we going to do that moving forward to make sure that we have? Every department head says, this is what I want. This is what we need. This is how we're going to accomplish it. Are we doing that? I know it's a little early now, but are we going to do that?
Actually, it's a good question and we have, there's going to be a lot of card access. That's part of the meetings with I T, David M with E O C, all the departments, all four floors of that building. Commissioner Cook, beginning when you come into the lobby, the elevators, card access, a lot of doors, card access. Only staff can get through them. If the public needs to get through some of those doors, they have to be escorted. And then, so all four levels, there's card access doors. And that's part of the I T infrastructure, the structured cabling, the brevo door access system, the cameras, the security, all of that is part of that sixteen point two million that we've had. County I T and op services have had extensive input into that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, the only thing is I'm, me personally, and I, and I know Commissioner Thompson probably feels the same way. I'm always worried about someone getting in the E O C that's not supposed to be there. Somehow they got in that second level. I know that I've had situations with television operations where they got into the second level and then we're trying to keep them out of the control and keep them off the studio. And that, we were able to stop them, but they were, they had breached that second level. And then they were trying to go in the third. I'm always concerned about that. The second thing is we are, no compromises. We're hardened, we're going to be hardened so that we can have folks working in there. They don't have to worry about the roof blowing off or glass blowing out or whatever. It's, the buildings would be hardened, is that correct?
It, it'll, yes, it'll meet the building code for the wind zone we're in, which I believe is the hundred and forty mile an hour wind zone. The glass will not be bulletproof, but it's tempered because that would be a tremendous.
Now I'm talking about like a hurricane, cat three or better.
Yeah, it, it'll be per the building code.
Well, the building code for residential or commercial buildings, not what I'm talking about.
It's the code for a public safety building.
For public, I'm, it's a cat four, thank, thank you.
Okay, good, good.
It, it's a cat four building, that's right.
And I was down in Beaumont, Texas. I looked at their E O C down there when we were looking at, I was on that design group for the E O C initially, or turned down, but we didn't do it. We did the nine-one-one center instead. But the thing was, went to Beaumont, Texas, they have a population of a hundred thousand ten years ago. And they had a storm that came in and it came in the second floor level. Of course, we don't have that to the same degree because we've already looked at that. But do we have sheltering and also an elevation perspective for the generator? Or generators so that we make sure that the garden variety flood that we may have or with the storm or whatever, it's got some shielding for it, but also has the elevation to keep it out of the water.
That's right. The, uh, the generator is elevated. It's on a large belly tank. It's a, and it's actually so high that by the building code, there has to be a catwalk for access. Steps up, that's in the building code. You get so high off the ground, you have to have steps up to service the generator, but it's that high off the ground where, and then you have a belly tank under it. And I can show you where the generator is going to go, it's on the site plan. That's a good question. That red rectangle right there
Yep.
is the generator on the side parking lot. That's, uh, and the reason that's cited there, if you, I'm sure you guys are aware of it, last year or so, B M C pulled all this underground power in, in that area and they set new vaults. And you see all those new green cabinets and everything that's there when you walk over there now. That's where all the updated high voltage is that the M C put in. So that made sense to put the generator right there because she had to interconnect. This building will not be on the microgrid on the campus like a lot of our buildings are. It is, it's like the call center, it's totally standalone, dedicated three-phase power from all that new B M C work years ago. And its own generator, that generator is sized to carry the whole building. And we're also like the call center, Commissioner Cook, putting a connection port on the back of the building where you can bring a trailer mounted generator in.
Yes, sir. As a backup, yeah.
It's a good point. And what you said made me think of it in case that standby generator was to fail. But the call center has that, there'll be a hookup port with a switch on the back of the building where op services can bring it or utilities can bring a trailer mounted generator in, plug in, power the building.
That's, that's great here. Well, Beaumont, Beaumont, Texas, in fact, what they did, what they rebuilt, they put their generator, they put two generators on the ninth floor of the building. Believe that because they said, we're never going to want to deal with this again. I don't know about logistics or fixing it or fueling it, but point being, yeah. Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
And, and that's part of why, you know, I guess, you know, the E O C is on the fourth floor. Not only that it gives them a nice view, but you know, again, this site has never flooded, but on the fourth floor, certainly shouldn't have a flooded E O C, so.
Yeah.
Flooded building at all, but it's.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
Mission William?
Just one quick question about the E O C. Will there be a space and capability in there to do something like live stream press briefings and things during an event? Is that in the planning?
My understanding is absolutely yes. I'm not an expert in that area. I believe David M is here, but yes, there's a lot of technology in the E O C. It has its own data room as, I mean, the building has a lot of data rooms, but the E O C has to have its own data room, raised floor for all the cabling underneath. You've seen those like in the call center, you know, everything runs out. And it'll have dedicated backup to the heat in there that, or the heat cooling mainly that cools the data room. Lot of audio visual stuff. Again, that's a part of that cost you see that we're responsible for as a county.
Yeah.
Sixteen point two one six, that covers all your I T, audio, visual, radio, furniture fixture equipment, cabling, cameras, door access. I mean, everything's, it's been a tremendous amount of, this is why I started out this presentation saying, there has been a tremendous amount of input from staff here to the architect team to get us to where we are and everybody's doing a really good job and all of that was taken into account.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I know during some of the recent events, you had over county, for instance, had, they've got obviously a place where they can live stream their press briefings. And their spokesperson was kind of boring, but they did a good job with it, with the production of it. And then, you know, you go to the state E O C, they've got a press room with a stage and a podium and everything set up for that kind of thing. And I think moving forward, we can't rely on a TV station covering ten counties to give us more than thirty seconds. We've got to be able to put it on our website as long as we're taking that into account.
Yes, sir.
Randy? Randy?
All right, uh, you know, it was a short presentation, but it was a good presentation. I'll give you that. Um, uh, can you go to the, yeah, can you stop on the one with the E O C in it just a second? Yeah, the slide that has the fourth floor. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, right.
Uh, quick question for you. Uh, whether it's fortunate or unfortunate, I have had the opportunity to visit. Just about every county E O C in the state of North Carolina. Um, my question is during this, uh. Discussion and the, uh, the drawing out this plan. Is there anything in this that the department head or the staff desired? That's not in this, not included in this? Did, did anything get left out?
Only one item I'm aware of, there's this, these floor plans don't show all the card readers, you know, the full design drawings do. All the E O C doors have card readers except those two doors into that large conference room you see right there. This isn't a laser pointer, but. That large conference room is shared for fourth floor because again, the the building, three hundred and eight employees, the kitchen's on the fourth floor. The showers, the laundry, this is, we have the two big multipurpose rooms, everything shared and then the conference room. The two doors, uh, Commissioner Thompson into that conference room where you see two tables will not be. Card reader access, but the door into the E O C from that conference room will be. The hallway doors into E O C corridors and the doors into the E O C will have, will have card reader access.
Okay.
There was discussion on that point and it was decided that it was in the best interest of the project to not have. Card readers on those two doors so that the, that large conference room could be shared by everybody. Because that's really the only conference room on the fourth floor.
Okay.
But wouldn't they also have? I mean, would they not have card readers that they could go into other parts? So could you, I mean, like my card will open up. A variety of different places on the campus, but other places it won't. So why not have a card reader that would only allow some staff to go into that area? You know?
I'm not quite sure I understand. I mean, I, I'm.
Point, are we talking about this conference room?
No, sir, or right at the straight up, the big conference room.
The big one up there?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Yes, sir. See the two doors into the hallway, Commissioner Thompson, and then the door into the E O C, the door into.
Where is the door that leads into this area here? I'm assuming it's down this corner here?
No, there's, there's none on the corridors. That's why you have card readers on the doors into the E O C. Other than the two doors into the conference room. So you're, if you see that corridor, the two corridors will have card readers.
I see this door right here. Can you gain access to here and then get into here through that door?
That door will have a card reader, the one you just pointed at. Yes, sir. From the one door from the large conference room into the E O C will have a card reader.
Okay. Which rooms on here are the multipurpose rooms you're talking about?
Yes, sir. Those two right there, you see, uh, Commissioner Williams that they have like set a lot of chairs and tables in them and there's a partition.
Okay, kind of on the right side in the middle.
Uh, right here on the left, kind of. Just, you see the two, they got nine, nine, uh, symbology in each one. There's like nine. Yes, sir, that's it. And then there's a partition between them that can be opened up. Those rooms will have floor outlets, all that stuff, screen.
To tie that back into my earlier question, I'm assuming that room will have the multi, the multimedia capability to do things like. The live stream of a media presentation, that type of thing.
Yes, that's my understanding. Yes, sir.
And I know emergency management has obviously had a lot of input into the E O C. Has communication had input into the comms community part of that?
Um, yes, I think so, although I have to say, Megan, um, may have.
Megan nodded in the negative on that. So I think that would be an important group to have in from on that.
I think we have had input from that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Oh, haven't gotten that, thank you. Haven't gotten that granular level of detail.
That, that will be an internal project with Brunswick County I T. And that's why you see a number here that we're confident is sufficient. For the I T needs and the furnishing needs is you remember our last major project. Uh, some of those things were not in the.
Yeah.
Project upfront and we wanted to make sure that we didn't have a whoops at, at. The end stages of this one.
As a communication professional who deals with a lot of I T professionals, also include communication in that to make sure that it's not only. Technically accurate, but it has the functionality they need.
We, we absolutely will.
Oh, can I bring up one last? I don't want to belabor it, but if you go over the E O C now, building C or whatever. They've got a, a building around their generator. Are we going to do that? Because if we have debris, flying debris, whatever, and it hits that generator and affects it. Do we have some kind of shielding, some kind of a wall, some kind of a? A building or it's encased or anything like that, or it's just sitting out in the open?
Right, that's a good question. So the standby generators, you know, they need all of the codes and everything and they actually are inside an enclosure. And so they're rated to be out in the environment, just like at the sewer pump stations or our buildings here, the depot, the large generator. We don't have a building built around this generator. Like we, the older building C had the block building with a generator in there. This one is.
I'm just concerned if we had flying debris, trees, whatever, like that comes down, hits the side of the building, everything's protected, then we're out of power.
We, we can ask the architect, take a look at that. It is designed to be a freestanding self-contained unit.
Like the one behind us, yeah.
Sir, that's right.
I think we need to look into having it. I've seen a lot of places. It's, it's decorative to a certain degree because you hide them.
About a hundred and two million.
But what you do is, nah, nah, come on. And then what you do is you build a wall or wall or roof or whatever, you case it around there somehow. So then that way, if you've got flying debris, it's not going to hit that generator and adversely affect it. Because there'd be nothing worse than sit there in the E O C, you're hardened, but you're in the dark and you're waiting on operations to bring another generator.
Yeah, what, that, that's a good point. One thing we can do, you know, planning almost assuredly will require screening per the U D O around the dumpster and the generator. Ancillary uses like that. So it may be possible if we have to screen it anyway, per the zoning administration. Administrator that we can work with the architect to see what it would cost to build a more robust screening instead of the screening that's separate.
You can build a, you could build a brick box around it or something, you know, and.
Because we're going to have to screen it per the U D O.
Yeah.
Um, I wanted to point one and I'll make a note to ask about that. Yes, sir. I wanted to, I forgot to mention one thing on the site plan. You see the five hundred foot fall radius on the tower here? Because the world we live in now for many, many years, the building code requires all buildings to be outside the fall radius of a tower. And you can see that the architect shows the five hundred foot fall radius for the tower. You can't have a building inside the fall radius, but you can have parking, green space, landscaping, that kind of thing. And so what you see there, we had to squeeze this building in. We had to be outs, right outside the fall radius of the tower.
Basically, you're saying it.
Yes, sir, right there, that arc. That, and you can see the radius from the tower there and so five hundred foot. So we met that. Uh, they went over that in meetings with code administration and building officials. Uh, now, you know, a long time ago, back in the day, that obviously wasn't the case because the current building C is within the fall radius of the tower. But in today's world, we have to meet that requirement and we did. So.
I just want to thank you for bringing the update to us. This is pretty much a, a good report. Uh, of course, the cost is, is the other, the downside, but I know it's well needed. Uh, especially with D S S and the help department. It's.
Yes, ma'am.
Those buildings over there are old.
You know, as a board, you guys adopted the complex master plan a few years ago. We did. This is the first building to be designed. And built per the complex master plan and, um, so, so again, building A, B, C and. Part of C and, um, E O C and the B N X are moving into this building, three hundred and eight employees. It really does align well with the complex master plan. It's the first building we've designed and built, you know, per the complex master plan, so.
Well, I appreciate it.
Any other comments?
Any action required?
No, sir, no actions required, but I would like to make a, a comment on the cost. Uh, actually, when we first started meeting with the design team, they told me to expect six hundred and twenty five. To six hundred and fifty dollars a square foot construction cost. While the total project cost has gone up, there are two factors in that. One, the campus master plan. Had left out an entire D S S operating unit, so D S S needed significantly more space than we thought. When we started and then we made the decision to actually combine two projects. And put the E O C in here, which essentially led to the additional floor, but this. Number now, it really, the actual building construction is about four hundred and seventy seven dollars a square foot. And the total, including the, the campus infrastructure improvements comes out to like five eighty four or five eighty five. So the cost per square foot has actually come down. What the design team has told me over the next few months, as they're doing the fine tuning. They would actually expect the cost per square foot to decline a little more with one exception. And that's an unknown and they say, uh, tariffs could. Cause the cost per square foot to go the other way, but that. You know, there's, there's no way to project what those will be until such time as. The cost is, is locked in at the G M P.
What a bargain, five hundred and eighty five dollars. Needless to say, I'm, I'm on a little bit of sticker shock. I, I mean, a hundred million dollars for a building. I. Bizarre to me. You could probably build a casino in Vegas for that.
I got one last question. I got one last. Since we're etching this in concrete, stone or whatever, that's going to be forever and ever, amen. I mean, I really would wish it, I mean, I, I'm getting words back and forth, public safety building and things like that. I really would like, I wish it was a cat five rated. I mean, I've, I've gone through cat threes, several cat threes. And, uh, when I was in Florida and we had a television facility that was rated for cat five. And they closed the doors and it wasn't a big deal. They were good to go and they still operated the entire way as if they were impervious to it. But the other thing is I really would like to say, since we're really going to get this thing established, I really wish you'd go back and talk to every department head and say, and including Megan and say. Is this what you want? Is everything being addressed? Do you have any other concerns? Because so, you know, say it now, forever hold your peace. Cause I, I, I really, that way we know when we come to the table together. Everybody's on the same page. Everybody says we all put everything we could into it. I know we think we've already done that. But we've identified a few things that, you know, possibly could be refined and my hope is that you'd go back to each one of them individually and say. This is everything you want. Have we looked at everything? And take it to heart what their concerns are because they, they live over the store, every one of them do, you know, so.
Yes, sir, we can do that. And again, we have a one P M meeting in person with E M P S Wednesday. So we'll start bringing those concerns up, start that dialogue as well, bring up the screening on the generator, everything that's been mentioned here. But we'll circle back with all the senior staff, the department heads that have employees moving into the building.
Okay.
We, we meet every two weeks. We've been meeting every two weeks for.
Yes, sir.
Ever, it seems.
I don't, again, I don't really see much changing, if any at all, but we'll circle back when it is.
Okay, I just want to make sure that nobody comes back and says, I wish we'd done this. It was like. Want to make sure, you know, and it's not so much that, it's the thing is. It's making sure that it's taken to heart, whatever the issue is that they know this is. It's got my fingerprints on it. We did, we did everything we could to make it work.
Well, yes, sir, I hear you. We have tried to do that as a team. I can assure you that everybody.
Okay.
The team has done that. Um, but we'll, we'll make sure we continue to do that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a, a, a comment specifically to Commissioner Cook? These building code codes aren't the same as storm categories. The category four building code is the most storm resistant code. And that's what's actually now required for public safety facilities in the state anyhow, but it's not. It's not like it's a category for hurricane. It's, it's a different scale. It only goes one to four.
Yeah, but the only thing I'm trying to say is it's like, what does that mean in English? Because I mean, I don't, I don't, you know, we have a storm, we don't look at it as well at that rates, you know, the building code of such and such. We look at it from a category perspective.
The, the. The walls and the roof structure would be expected to remain intact in any storm. That would be expected to come through Brunswick County.
Okay, all right.
I have one question. Bill or Steve? When are we putting a shovel in the ground before this goes up to two hundred million?
I'm sorry, could you?
When are we going to put a shovel in the ground? Cause every month this just keeps going up and up. This project started at half this cost, don't we?
Well, again, right, so they're in the construction document preparation phase and we're supposed to get the guaranteed maximum price by the schedule in May. Uh, so shortly after, well, the county obviously has to approve the G P M and approve them moving into. Applying for a building permit and being, so the next, the key, the next key milestone through the critical path of that schedule. Is two things, finishing up the construction documents that they're working on. And telling the county what the G M P is in May and getting approval to move forward. We've had to give them approval to move from each phase from preliminary space program into schematic design to design development. We just gave them approval a week and a half ago to move into construction documents. They finished design development. So they're, so those two key milestones, Commissioner Porte, continue on the construction documents and tell us what the guaranteed maximum price is going to be. And I agree with the manager, there's a lot of variables in there. It could go up, it could go down, we don't know. I mean, but until we get the guaranteed maximum price, that is the G M P. By the schedule, they can't move past that on the schedule without county approval, just like any phase.
If, if we get the G M P in May, then it's the intent. For the notice to proceed to be in June, so, so shovel in June.
That's right. That's right. Thank you, Steve. I had that on the slide, but. Maybe it was on the previous slide. Here it is. G M P in mid May, notice to proceed in late May. The, the project schedule, Commissioner Fonte, only shows a week for discussion with the county, week minimum, more if needed. If the county approves the G M P and releases them to move into the next phase there, that would be the. Notice to proceed for construction. That's why that says late May, early June and the G M P is mid May. It's about a two week window.
Anybody else have any other questions? Thank you, Bill. It was a good presentation. We was sticker shock, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other business or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing. You know, I bought some audio equipment recently and I have my hearing checked with it and my hearing is actually excellent. But I've noticed one thing in this room tonight. It seems the speakers back here are working, but they're not working here because I'm hearing. What you call ambiance, a lot of echo, because when somebody speaks softly, you're hearing them from there, but it's hard to really hear them up here. We're not getting the audio up here the way we should be getting it. So my, my question is, is that something that we can look into as much?
I T guy, how you feeling about that? And don't run away. I have something here I need you to do.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Ayes.
Everybody?
Aye.